Everyone, good to take your seats, start tonight's meeting. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciated by a moment of silence. You've heard the motion by Council Gould. All in favor, any opposed, to vote? Councillors, we're gonna move to item 7A. Item 7A. And if the mayor would please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Real briefly, I wanted to come today to speak on behalf of the appointment I'm hoping to be approved by you for our Community Development Director. First, I want to talk a little bit about the process and then make the introduction. It was an outstanding collection of candidates that we had for the Community Development position. We had over thirty-five applicants for the position. I had asked to put together a screening committee, and I wanted to thank the members of that screening committee, our Human Resources Director, Beth O'Donnell, Dave Terrenzoni, our DPS Director, Dave Gravel from the City Council, and Diane Healy from the Chamber of Commerce. That was our screening committee. They interviewed thirteen candidates and made recommendations to me. The final candidates were interviewed by myself, Al Talariqo, the Building Commissioner, and Carolyn Nguyen from the Council on Aging. And the candidate that rose to the top was someone I think all of you are very familiar with. Very excited to bring him onboard. Kurt Bellevance used to work here for the City of Peabody some years ago. I won't say the number to embarrass him with his age, but he was here a number of years ago, worked for the City of Peabody as a planner, was involved in a number of projects for the City of Peabody that are still, actually many still are ongoing today. From here, he went to become the Assistant Community Development Director for Plymouth, before moving on to Methuen to be the Community Development Director there, and then went on to North Andover where he was the Community Development Director for a number of years. The last few years, he's been the Town Manager for Tingsborough, involved in a wide variety of issues. As the Town Manager, as you can imagine, a very challenging job, and he was very interested in the opportunity to come back to the City of Peabody. I was very impressed with his answers as to why he would want to leave a Town Manager position to come to the City of Peabody as a Community Development Director. And he talked about love for this community, pride for this community, and wanted to be a part of great things. And I'm very excited to have him onboard. His expertise is unquestioned in the areas of planning, community development, and I think we already have an excellent team in the Community Development Department here in Peabody. And with his leadership, I think we're gonna do even more great things. So I wanted to introduce Kurt Bellevance as my appointment to be the Community Development Director. Kurt? Where is he? Here he is.
Motion received, item 7A, please. Motion received.
Motion received.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the screening committee going through the process. I used to sit on the other side many times and have gone through the process of hiring many people throughout my career. So it was an interesting process to go through that and sit on that side as well. And sort of what the mayor was saying is that I'm, what drove me, what was really my passion to come back to the city, to where I live, and I've been living for the last twenty-four years. I started out working for the city. That was the reason I moved here. I've only lived in two places in my whole life, and I've almost lived in Peabody as much as Attleboro where I grew up. But I really feel a connection with the city. My kids had gone through the school system here. I've lived here for so many years that I really wanted to work for the city, and I wanted to give back. Sort of, I don't see myself as working for the city in a role of, as a job. I see it just more of a, you wanna love what you do and what you do in your career. And I think this is the perfect example. Probably similar to what many of you do as councillors. You do this not for the accolades, but for, because you love the city and you wanna see the city improve and the city strive and move forward. And those are the exact reasons that I wanted to come back to the city and work here as well. So I appreciate you considering the appointment this evening, and I wanted to thank the mayor for choosing me as one of the candidates to lead the Community Development Department. So, thank you.
Council Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that we, being involved in that interview committee was probably one of the more exciting experiences. I had to call the mayor after doing the interviews and say, "I can't believe how many truly superbly qualified candidates showed up." And literally, all of them were capable of taking on the position. And it's really a nice process to be able to sift through the best of the best and find your way to a selection where you can really feel like you couldn't go wrong. And the interview was fabulous. My knowledge of Kurt as both an individual and grown to know him through Mary as a friend and, I just think you couldn't find somebody who really has more in his heart about doing well for the city than I think Kurt Bellevance. And so I was a strong proponent of his hiring and his selection, and I feel the same way today. I think he's gonna do a great job. I think he's a great addition for a very important position in terms of moving the city forward from a development standpoint and putting the life back in both the downtown Centennial Park and throughout. So I'm glad you opted to come in, and thank you very much for putting your name out there.
Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to briefly congratulate Kurt and welcome home. Thrilled to have you. Just remember, at the end of the day, you don't report to Mayor Benton Court, you report to Mary Bellevance. Congratulations, Kurt. Thank you.
Council Garabedian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna congratulate Kurt, and I think it's a great move that we have the leader of the Community Development from the City of Peabody that he lives. And I want to thank the mayor for that. Thank you.
Council Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember working with Kurt in the mid-'90s as a downtown business owner, and I remember sitting through all those slide shows of what it looked like in the '70s and '80s multiple, multiple times, and did a good job back then, so looking forward to having you onboard.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just reiterate what some of our other councillors have already said with respect to how happy I am to see Mr. Bellevance join the city in this capacity. His credentials are impeccable. He is amply qualified, and I'm very much looking forward to working with him. Thank you.
And the only thing that I want to say, Kurt, is what you said, which is what I say to my kids every day, is do something that you love and it's not a job. And I try and teach them that, and you said that tonight, and that really resonated with me. Congratulations. We're all happy to have you. Good luck. Thank you.
Move to approve the appointment of the mayor for Kurt Bellevance to be our Community Development Director.
You've heard the motion? All in favor? Take a roll call vote.
Councillors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Just gonna do one housekeeping note that I didn't do at the beginning of the meeting. Open meeting you want. This meeting is being televised live on cable Channel 9 and being taped by Peabody Access TV and also being recorded by our City's Council Stenographer. Now we'll move back. Item 4A, that is continued until our next meeting on May 25th. Item 4A is continued to May 25th. Next on the agenda, item 4B. If the clerk will read the special permit, please.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council, the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, May 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. on the application from ALV Corp., 11 Green Street, Danvers, Mass. for a special permit, seeking a special permit for the continuation of a non-conforming use, specifically the operation of a restaurant at 117 Linfield Street, Peabody, Mass. as filed in accordance with Sections 1.5.1, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
If the petitioner would like to come to the mic and tell us what you'd like to do, state your name, address for the record.
I was busy congratulating Kurt. We've got a new person to be friendly with. Same old, same old for me, but. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have a law practice at 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Luigi Vouloge. And I did not actually complete the application for special permit. I'm sort of a late entry, but I've had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Vouloge, and I've also had the opportunity to meet with Councillor Turco. And the permit application is intended to suggest that Mr. Vouloge would live by the same conditions that are already in place with Artis as it stands today. And I see that the hours of operation appear to be in conflict. It says the business hours of operation would be 5:30 AM to 10 PM on Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, 7:30 AM to 10 PM on Sunday. But if you look at the website for Artis as it exists today, it suggests and tells you that the kitchen closes at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and that is in accordance with the special, with the judgment of the court that was entered into the record here at the City of Peabody. So I think that the person, and then the dairy products are available till 10 PM at night. And if you look over the past couple of years, there are times that early in the season, dairy is only open till 8 o'clock. I think that's predominantly during the winter, but then they do expand it all the way to 10 o'clock during the summer months. So those are all conditions that my client is willing to live with, the ALV Corporation of 11 Green Street in Danvers, Mass. So we're happy to, I think that there are three other conditions that are gonna be suggested this evening, one of which is to place the dumpster on a concrete pad and enclose it, and my client has agreed to that. Second, I think, is to certainly live by the same hours, and we're more than willing to do that, and that we're willing to take down no trees on the easterly and northerly side of the property as we are adjacent to Alexandra Drive. And there's no intention to remove any of those, and I would gladly accept a condition that says there can be no removal, and if any are removed, then we would replace them with a similar caliber, similar-sized tree so that that would still survive as a buffer. The changes that are anticipated are actually changes to the facade of the premises. My client wants to go in, put a little more glass, make it updated, more of an updated look. So we will invest money into the property. We're certain that he would certainly get a building permit for that work, and we're certain that that would be improvement to the neighborhood. Lastly, there will be no expansion of the existing pavement. If there was to be an extension of pavement, I believe that would need, must need be approved by the Conservation Commission because to the rear of the premises is a wetland area. So we would certainly agree to any condition that suggests we cannot expand without going before the Conservation Commission. Our present intention is to just put a sealer coat on the existing paving and restripe the parking lot so it's much more readily available to people where they are supposed to be parking and where they're not. So I think that addresses the concerns that both the neighbors had, that the Councillor Turco had, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with respect to this application.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in favor of the petitioner?
Surprise, surprise. Surprise, surprise, surprise. Surprise. I got it the wrong time. I hate to spoil your, my name's Richie, Richard Medina, 1B Laurel Street, South Peabody, Mr. President. I live directly across from Artis, and I have lived there for, since 1966, when it was Holden's Ice Cream, then Mrs. G's, and then Artis. And I just want to say that Artis has done a tremendous job, and I want to say that publicly, that Artis has done a tremendous job. He has been a credit to the neighborhood. And I stand in favor of this because I want it to continue. And that's why I'm here, because we've, I don't want to get into this, but anyway, but that's why I'm here. And as far as a new owner, I know he's not a Peabody person, I don't think he's a Peabody person, Holden's and Gardner's and Artis, but I am curious about the corporation and the new owners. Has Community Development vetted that corporation? Have they looked into his business history and make sure he's a good neighbor for the residents? I'm sure he is going to be, but I'm just gonna say that's one of my concerns. And I don't think that will happen because we've had, we've had a good history. And if he's gonna, if Mr. Kelty says he's a good person, and he vouches for him, I'll go along with that. But the ten issues that are on there, on the 1994 City Council list of conditions, the one that I am concerned with, and I want to be sure that it's emphasized here, that the petitioner does not allow alcohol on the site. I want him to be aware that that's the number-one issue in my concern. I'm not a teetotaler by any means, and I like a good time like everybody else. But if you're gonna fix the inside, then you go, you update, then you're gonna say, "I want to get some money for all my investment." That's good business. But Artis made it without the alcohol. Mrs. G's made it without the alcohol. Holden's Ice Cream was Holden's Ice Cream. So I'm sure that's my concern. And I'm not trying to be negative, but that is a concern. I don't want him coming in, and I don't want it to come in front of the council again. And finally, there's a fire hydrant in front of Artis that he should be aware of, that in the winter it should be cleaned. Sometimes we have all these storms, storm dropped another, it sort of gets the city, the plows, plowed in. So just to make the new owner concerned, that's an issue. And it is, it's a non-conforming use, and we're just concerned, or I'm concerned, with the quality of life. At the end of my life now, I spend more time there than anywhere else. So it's a, it's an issue. And the value of my house. If I sell my house, the house next to me has been empty for six months. I'm not blaming it on anybody, but that's the way it goes. But the value of my house is a concern to me. And if there's an issue with business across the street, it bothers my value. And if I want to leave that house to my kids, I don't want them here fighting another 20 years, the next 20 years. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the council. And I wish the new owner the best of luck and success.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul McGavro, 15 Quarry Terrace, Peabody, Mass. Seventy years in South Peabody. Last forty-eight years on Quarry Terrace. The back of my house, you can see Artis from there. I'm just down here to support the sale of Artis. I'm gonna miss him, I'm gonna miss his family, but he's been a great neighbor, and he's a plus for the neighborhood. And I'm glad that another restaurant is gonna continue, and I just want to let him know that the fellas that go down there have breakfast and enjoy his place wants to speak for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else just like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Being none, Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, to add to what Mr. McGavro said, I agree. I'm very happy if this council agrees to allow Artis to retire in peace, and I do think that Artis is a staple in South Peabody, and this will only be a benefit to the neighborhood with Luigi taking over the property and doing some work. Obviously, as many of you know in the packet, there are a long list of conditions with some additional that Jack mentioned that we will add, done by the court in, I think it was 1994. Well, anyway, there's a list of conditions attached to the permit through the court, which we don't have the authority to override anyway, so those will remain in effect. And some residents have asked that I read those into the record, and I will. So I apologize in advance to our city clerk and Allison for the length of these conditions. But most of you know the property. One of the main concerns by the neighbors was the buffer zone on the left-hand side. I think Jack actually said the easterly side, but I think that's the westerly side. But it would be the property line on Alexandra Road and the northerly side of the property. The neighbors wouldn't like to see any trees removed from that area because it does create a nice buffer from the parking lot of Artis when people are out having their ice cream in the summertime, and the neighbors are still able to enjoy their backyards without, you know, interruption from the Artis customers. The neighborhood as a whole, anybody I've spoken to is greatly in favor of this project and this sale. One thing I did want to correct, this is not a special permit transfer as listed on item 4B. This is a new special permit according to the court order, or the court judgment, excuse me. The major issue that I believe my fellow councillors will probably bring up is the amount of tax, property tax, and I believe that totals out to, if my math is correct, about $77,972.31 to the City of Peabody. And obviously, I'm gonna add there's a condition, Jack, and we spoke about it, but I want to make sure that everybody's aware that typically I wouldn't even look at an application like this with that amount of money owed, but I feel that this guarantees the City of Peabody will get paid their property tax, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that this permit will not take effect until that amount is paid to the City of Peabody. Other than that, I really do want to wish Artis luck. Again, if the remainder of the council agrees, I think, I'm very, very happy for the Mahalo's family, and I just want to say to Artis, thank you for ice cream and breakfast for the last fifteen years.
I can just speak to?
Yes, Attorney Kelty.
Yes, it is the westerly side. I stand corrected. Secondly, yes, the taxes will be paid at the time of closing. The original closing was intended to be May 1. I believe now it'll probably be shortly after the passage of the 20-day appeal period for this, and those taxes will be taken out and adjusted at the closing. And Mr. Luigi did live in Peabody for a number of years, and he did operate a similar business in Peabody on Lowell Street. He lived and had a business in Peabody on Lowell Street. So we're not dealing with a complete stranger in the sense that although he's now in Green Street in Danvers, he was a longtime Peabody-risen, so.
Council Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to Artis, I wish you the best of luck. Wish you the best of luck, and you always wear a friendly face sitting on the corner at the counter welcoming everyone with a smile on your face. And South Peabody will miss you, and we wish you the best of luck and enjoy your retirement. And lastly, if I could suggest to Council Turco regarding the trees, I know that Mr. Kelty used the verbiage that there won't be any trees taken down, and if they are in ever, in era, the trees of similar caliber and similar size will be put in. If you could enter that language into the permit, I simply say that because once trees go down, no matter how tall they are and how mature they are, little saplings go in, cheap little saplings will go in, and kinda people forget about that issue, and that's a major issue, as you know, for the neighbors. So if you could enter that specific language into the special permit, I'm sure no trees will be knocked down, but if they are, you can easily point to the special permit in correcting it. Thank you.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Kelty. Attorney Kelty, is your client aware of the feedback from the Health Department that accompanies the application, and they're prepared to deal with that? If you could just address that briefly.
Yes, we are aware, and so we've got to have all our systems reviewed with the Health Department, and we have to have a new permit issued from them, yes.
And just one other quick question, Mr. President, through you. You've mentioned that the applicant previously operated a business on Lowell Street, a restaurant. What was that restaurant?
Pardon?
You had mentioned that this applicant previously operated a business.
Giovanni's on Lowell Street.
Giovanni's, thank you.
Next to Profecta.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Turco.
Mr. President, through you to Council McGinn as well as Attorney Kelty. I did speak to Sharon Cameron, and there was so much to write regarding the request from the Health Department that she kind of put an all-encompassing statement in there, and she said she will work with the new owner to address. It's just basically an update in requirements for cleanable walls and cleanable ceilings that Artis wasn't expected to have. Anyway, she will address those with the new owner, and it clearly states in there that no food service permit will be issued until that's taken care of. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Council Turco.
Move to close the public hearing.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed to vote? Council Turco.
Mr. President, move to approve the special permit for ALV Corp., 11 Green Street, Danvers, Mass. for a special permit for continuation of a non-conforming use, specifically the operation of a restaurant at 117 Linfield Street, Peabody, Mass. as filed in accordance with Sections 1.5.1, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Ready, Allison? One, there shall be no expansion of the existing building footprint. Two, the seating capacity shall not be more than 50 seats. Three, there shall not be a separate room for birthday parties, weddings, sports teams, celebrations, i.e. Little League, Pop Warner football, et cetera, or other similar-type functions or activities. Furthermore, in order to discourage the premises from being a so-called hangout for adolescents, there shall be no video game and jukeboxes. Four, there shall be no deliveries to the premises between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Five, kitchen and food service activities for customers of the restaurant shall commence at 6:00 AM and cease at 4:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday it shall commence at 9:00 AM and cease at 4:00 PM. For the purposes of this paragraph, kitchen and food service activity shall mean the taking of customer orders. Nothing contained herein shall prohibit the preparation during other hours of food to be served later in the day for the next day. The dairy bar service activities, which include ice cream yogurt and other similar-type products and drinks.
products and drinks for customers, shall continue daily until 10:00 p.m. All of the foregoing to be seven days per week, as in the past. The premises shall not be open during Christmas Day. Six, no alcoholic beverages are to be sold or consumed upon the premises nor carried in by patrons to be consumed. Seven, within the special permit, the within special permit is issued to the applicant ALV Corporation, and if any other person shall in the future seek to operate a restaurant, as aforementioned, then he, she, or it, as the case may be, must petition the City Council or other appropriate permit-granting authority for a new special permit. Furthermore, in accordance with zoning ordinance and amendments or changes in use, will have to be approved by the City Council or other appropriate permit-granting authority, and the plaintiff reserves all of his rights to contest and appeal same. Eight, the dumpster shall be located either at the rear of the building or on the westerly side of the building. Furthermore, the dumpster shall not be emptied between 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Nine, the exhaust fans shall be located toward the westerly side of the building. The kitchen shall be no closer to the easterly side of the building than the previous food preparation area. Ten, a fence six feet high, except for the initial approximate, except for the initial approximate feet of fence, beginning at the front property line, which portion shall be similar in nature to the fence on the westerly boundary of the property, shall at the sole cost and expense of ALV Corporation, Inc., be erected and continue to be maintained in good condition along the easterly boundary to a depth of 140 feet from the property line. Said fence to be erected by, this is an old date, so we'll strike that last line, the fence to be erected by, since it's already erected. Eleven, the east side of the building shall be maintained with the windows to be repaired or boarded up or sealed in a neat manner at the option of ALV Enterprises. Said work to be formed. Again, those windows are all set, so there'll be no date. Twelve, applicants shall work with Community Development Department regarding vehicular egress and access concerning the property. Thirteen, employees shall be encouraged to park toward the rear of the property, and furthermore, a planting shall be maintained by ALV Corporation, Inc., next to the fence from the property line, a distance of 50 feet in length and five feet in width from the foregoing fence to be erected. Fourteen, any trash receptacle shall be placed in visible areas, i.e. the front yard and parking lot, and shall be pleased at all times with regard to litter control. Applicant can work with the Community Development Department for placement of said trash receptacles. The new and additional would be fifteen, no removal of trees at the perimeter of the property on the northerly and westerly sides. In the event of an accidental or need for a removal, it shall be replaced with a tree of equal size and caliber, as was removed. Two, the dumpster to be placed, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's not two, that would be sixteen, dumpster to be placed on a pad in an enclosure, and by dumpster, I also mean the grease trap. Three, payment of property taxes in the amount of $77,972.31, and whatever else may be owed at the time of closing, to the City of Peabody. And four, again, eighteen, eighteen, no expansion of the existing pavement beyond the currently paved area. So moved.
Refere the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Ocean Carers, 11 to nothing.
Congratulations. Item number five, reports of committees, Finance Committee, Counsel Gravel.
I don't know if I can beat that list of conditions. Okay. There was a, this evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee held. In attendance, on behalf of the committee, were myself, as the chair, Counsel Gould, Counsel Manning-Martin, Counsel McGinn, and Counsel Turco. We also had present with us Counsel Walsh, Counsel Metzulis, Counsel Charis, Counsel Sinowitz, and Counsel Garabedian, and Counsel Saslaw. First item on the agenda this evening was the transfer of funds from Brooksbury Farm, part-time wages and overtime wages in the amount of $45,000. Motion was made to move $45,000 from account 35603 to part-time wages in the amount of, to account 51120 in the amount of $22,000, and the Brooksbury overtime account, 51130 in the amount of $23,000, for a total of $45,000. Motion was made unanimously accepted, so moved.
Refere the motion. Roll call, vote please.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Ocean Carers, 11 to nothing.
Next on the agenda was the transfer of funds from Brooksbury Farm Capital Equipment to buy a brand-new tractor, which cost only $94,200. And the motion was made to move the $94,200 from our revolving fund, our Brooksbury Farm Revolving Fund, account number 35603, and push it into our capital equipment fund, account number 6620, in the same amount of $94,200. Motion was made and was approved unanimously, so moved.
Refere the motion. Roll call, vote please.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Ocean Carers, 11 to nothing.
And last, certainly not least, was the transfer of funds from CPA to the South School Playground in the amount of $35,000. And Counsel Turco gave us a really good update on where the total status of funds was with that, as well as the potential timeframe to getting that done, and we were all pleased to hear that the, that the group has raised, on behalf of the Ella Memorial, has raised over $91,000 to date privately. So that money will be matched with a $35,000 grant from the CPA. And the motion was made to, get the accounts. The account was to move from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Account, 33021, to the Community Preservation Act South School Playground Account, account 369, in the same amount of $35,000. Motion was made to prove unanimously, so moved.
Refere the motion. Roll call, vote please.
Counselors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Ocean Carers, 10 to nothing.
No further report.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Manning-Martin.
No motions, Mr. Chairman.
motions and orders and resolutions. Counsel Garabedian. Counsel Gravel.
Yes, sir. Move on the suspension of the rules to receive item 7B, the transfer of funds from City Clerk part-time wages to City Council salaries and City Council's type-in, in the amount of $7,175, to the Finance Committee, so moved.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
And last, is not a motion, but it's a, I want to take a moment to remind the council that the George Peabody Legacy Awards will be held here in this auditorium next Thursday, May 18th. It will commence at 6:00 p.m. Tickets can be had online. Ticket price is $35 a person, and the website is peabodeedfoundation.org. And we have five great recipients this year. Donna Costa, who is with the city for over 40 years, currently a business teacher and retiring this year as Department Head of the Electronics Department in Peabody. Elaine Marshall, who was a psychology teacher at Peabody High School from 1974 to 2008. June Kessel, who was a special education paraprofessional at the high school and probably volunteered for anything and everything associated with the drama club, et cetera, from 1986 to 2006. Lorraine Benoit, who was, and I believe, I'm not sure if she's still coaching, but she was in the system from 1968 to 2003, and really paved the way for women's sports at the high school under the Title IX provision. And last but not least, Christine Gubish, who headed up the elementary and early childhood education program for the Kamalite for 35 years. All great people, and one thing you should know is they're all people who, for the past five years, have been recommended and nominated to the Peabody Ed Foundation for recognition for this award. So we're looking forward to having a great event, and we would appreciate anybody who can make it, please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8H and refer to the Industrial Community Development Committee.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Mr. President, I'd like to file a motion. I'll give you just a little backdrop. At the mayor's community cleanup, citywide cleanup day, which I believe took place last Saturday or the Saturday before, we noticed that, myself and the residents that picked up in Ward 1, noticed that a lot of the debris is recyclable materials, bottles, plastics. And a resident said to me, you know, I believe a lot of that gets blown out of the recycle bins. So what I'd like to do is get a cost from JRM, maybe through Public Services, as to covered recycle bins, to see if that cuts down on the trash. I'm sure we've all seen it, the day-after trash day, and my error, it's Monday. On Tuesday morning, it's, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's Sunday. On Monday morning, up and down Linfield Street is trash and debris. And I'm thinking if we can get covered containers, that will cut down on a lot of that.
Refere the motion. Any discussion? All in favor and opposed to vote?
And lastly, it was informational, it came to my attention last night, Counsel Gravel, you'll be glad to hear, or maybe not so glad to hear this, 143 Linfield Street, the contaminated site, went on the MLS and on the market through a realtor for $3.1 million. The problem that I have with this, and I just want to make this public, is that the advertisement states that it's available to develop up to 120 multifamily homes through the realtor. So I'd like to refer that ad to the city solicitor and have an opinion as to whether the city could actually prevent that from being advertised, because this is actually an IL zone where housing is not allowed. So how a realtor would be able to advertise that falsely, I don't really understand. So, anyway, I'd like to refer the ad for 143 Linfield Street and the MLS to Mike Mazinski for an opinion as to whether that would be legal or not.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to have Department of Public Services fix the berm, damaged berm in front of 24 Davis Terrace, so moved.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
And I need some help from my fellow counselors. I've had a few phone calls and actually a meeting with a couple of residents about how the assessed value gets determined by the assessor's office. So I'd like to put that in subcommittee, but I don't know which subcommittee. Would that be yours, Counselor Sinowitz, or yours, Counselor Gravel? I don't, I'm very unfamiliar with it. I'd like to have the assessors come and explain how they derive the assessed value of a home finance. Could I please, Tim, schedule a meeting and invite the assessor's office?
Refere the motion.
To the Finance Committee, please.
All in favor and opposed to vote?
Sooner rather than later, Tim?
I think we have a meeting scheduled, I think we have a Finance Committee scheduled for the 25th.
Okay. Thank you. No further motions. Thank you.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you like me to take AG on your behalf?
That'd be great.
Yeah, and the suspension of the rules, move to receive item HE, and schedule a public hearing, so moved.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Thank you, Mr. President. No other motions.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one motion. I'd like to refer to the Human Services Committee for the purpose of discussion with the council, police, the police and fire chief, along with our director of the Health Department, the possibility of equipping our first responders with EpiPens. And on that motion, Mr. President, I had a conversation this morning with one of the directors at the Allergy and Asthma Awareness Initiative, and she would just like to have a conversation about the possibility of EpiPens being available when first responders are called, and somebody may need that EpiPen. It's not yet available, so the person has to be rushed to the hospital, and it's just a timing thing. Just would like to have a discussion about it and see if it is even a possibility.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Thank you.
Counsel Metzulis.
No motions.
No motions, Mr. Counsel.
Thank you. Counsel Charis.
Thank you. No motions, but just a point of information to let the public know, tomorrow I'll be visiting with the Department of Health down in Uzulow for the first, first meeting of the season to go over the improvements. You want me to stop? Over the improvements they have made and about to make, some new ones. So that's tomorrow. So that just the residents understand that we'll stay still on top of the older issues they had there. The other one is to recognize the DPS for getting out there and improving the island of Centennial Park in Summit Street. This council voted to improve that island, bring it out, excuse me, bring it out further for the safety reasons of trying to pull out. They had started that yesterday, today, and will complete it tomorrow, from my understanding. So it's a safety issue. I just want to, hats off to DPS for getting that going. The third one is the skate park, Barb Frisco Skate Park on Emerson Park. It's worked, talked to the Department of Recreation, they're aware they're going to be out there soon, and cleaning that area up. They had a nice jump last year to get that up and opening, and they're going to be sealing the tar again, and then cleaning that area up again. So I just want the residents to know that they're well aware, and they've been on it, and again, hats off to the city for all the work they did with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Father Sinowitz, I mean, Counsel Sinowitz. Look at what you wore.
Thank you. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E, and move approval, all papers being in order quickly. This was the one we needed to find out whether they would, within that year, and it looks like, working with the building inspector and Tim, that it's okay to go. So moved.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8F and set up a public hearing.
Refere the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Just a couple of items. Crystal Lake will be on hiatus for about a week, having to do with the amount of cover soils we need, and it's been a little lacking, so they need a week to catch up. Just a couple of items. Crystal Lake will be on hiatus for about a week, having to do with the amount of cover soils we need, and it's been a little lacking, so they need a week to catch up. So if anybody questions why anything's maybe not done for the next week or so, that's the reason. Bird Street's been put off to June. Just more papers going back and forth with all the engineers, and it's probably going to be the fall. I'm hoping January, but if I can push it out there far, I'd be thrilled. And finally, just a comment on Counsel Turco on that development. So to me, it seems clear that ComTank is not going to clean the property, he's already got it up for sale. So we'll see where this goes, but it's never going to get cleaned. So we shall see, that's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. I have one motion. I request Department of Public Services put up a slow, dangerous curve sign between 21 and 23 Gooddale Street, that sign was knocked over. Motion to put the sign back up, for the motion. All in favor and opposed to vote? And I need some help on Items 8, A, B, C, and D, if someone can help me out.
Move to, move to receive Item 8A, and approve, all papers being in order, so moved.
Agreed the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote?
Motion to receive Item 8B, with gratitude, so moved.
Agreed the motion, Item 8B, thank you, Counsel Manning. All in favor and opposed to vote?
Move to receive Item 8C, and advertise, I believe, Tim, is that correct?
8C is not advertise, it's, it's an appointment.
We already advertised, right? Yeah.
So what do we do with it? Standby.
Well, the appropriation went to the Finance Committee, so...
So, just clarification, so the, the ordinance was printed on here, not because we're creating the ordinance, this was just as a reference? There's an excerpt, on 8C, there's an excerpt of an ordinance.
Yeah, that was just a reference.
So that's a reference, that's existing, that was, that's what led to my confusion about whether we were creating the ordinance, but it's a reference, okay, thank you. So, move to approve, withdraw the prior motion, and move to approve the appointment of Allison M. Danforth, 16 Wentworth Drive, Beverly, Mass. 01915, to the position of Assistant Clerk of Committees, Counsel Stenographer, with a term to expire December 31st, 2017, so moved.
Agreed the motion, any discussion?
Mr. President, can we have a roll, roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Roll call vote, Counsel Manning-Martin.
Of course.
Am I doing the roll call? Oh, okay. Counselors Manning-Martin?
Still, yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gravell?
Absolutely, yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Congratulations, Allison, yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Mazzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinowitz?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing. Thank you.
Item 8D, Counsel Manning?
E.
E is in David.
D. I think that we already did refer that, didn't we?
Did we do that?
Yeah, I think we accepted and referred, I'll refer it again to legal, thank you. So moved.
And if someone could make a motion, receive Item 8I, and refer that to legal, please? Thank you, Counsel. To forward to the Rent Control Board, actually, we're going to forward it to them, because they've not met on it yet. Counsel Garabedian, agreed the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote? Thank you. Number nine on the agenda, 9A.
Utility contractors license MJ Modeling, Inc., MJR Custom House, PO Box 238, Linfield, Mass., move to approve, subject to all papers being in order.
Agreed the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.